Good afternoon. This is the April tenth meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The time is now four oh one, and we call this meeting to order. Please say the Pledge of Allegiance with me. Thank you very much. First, we'll do roll call. Mr. Montgomery?
Present.
Mr. Limbach?
Present.
Chair is present. DePew? Mr. Watkins? Absent.
Have we heard from yet?
Yep, thank you. Mr. Young?
Present.
Mr. Gonzalez appears to be absent. Mr. Martsky?
Yeah.
Mr. Saunders?
Present.
And Ms. Vickett?
Present.
We do have a forum. Thank you. Could we have the rules on the screen? Thank you. These are the ground rules for the meeting. Please turn off your cell phones and silence or silence the ringers. Please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, and no cheering, please. If you desire to speak, be sure and fill out a speaker information form and submit it to the planning staff. This should be done before the start of the meeting and is not required for docket applicants. Speakers must use the microphone there in the middle to capture their comments. We observe the following time limits. Each speaker is limited to five minutes for call to public, ten minutes for applicant statement, five minutes for supporters or those opposed, and five minutes for the applicant's rebuttal. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three commissioners are from cities. At least six are from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote fails. For special use permits, a tie vote triggers a rehearing at next meeting. Special use dockets are approved by this commission. Appeals of special use decisions are considered by the Board of Supervisors. Appeal procedures can be found on the county website. For additional assistance, contact the case planner. Dockets other than special use requests result in a recommendation forwarded by the commission to the Board of Supervisors. To voice an opinion regarding a recommendation, you may attend the Board of Supervisors' public hearing. Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or corrections for last month's minutes? Hearing none by roll call. Do you approve the minutes? Mr. Montgomery?
Good afternoon, Mr. Montgomery.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins is absent. Mr. Young?
Abstained.
Mr. Martsky?
Yeah.
Mr. Saunders?
Approved.
Ms. Vickett?
Approved.
Chair approves. Barely got those minutes approved. This is a time for call to public. Pursuant to section Arizona revised statute thirty-eight or thirty-one dot zero one H, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. I have no speakers' forms. We didn't miss anyone for call to public, did we? No online? Thank you. Let's move to our first docket item. RZ twenty-four dash zero four called Valley Vista Drive. The applicant requests a down zoning from RU two to RU four on four point three acres. The name is Wesley and Marinatha Jackson. Are you present? Thank you. Mr. Taylor, may we have the planning director's report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ twenty-four zero four on Valley Vista Drive, rezoning from RU two to RU four. The applicants are Wesley and Marinatha Jackson. Property is located at the northeast corner of Highway ninety-two and Valley Vista Drive. The parcel number is one zero four one two zero one six. Again, the rezoning is RU two to RU four. The property is located within growth area D. The plan designation is rural. The existing use of the property, the property is currently undeveloped. The proposed use is to build a single-family residence utilizing the county's owner-builder opt-out program. A visual showing that the property is located west of our location, just south of Sierra Vista municipal boundary. Property is located again at the corner of ninety-two, Highway ninety-two and Valley Vista Drive. The property is currently zoned rural, as are most of the surrounding properties to the southeast. Valley Vista Estates is a subdivision. It was planted nineteen sixty-five, consisting of approximately sixteen lots. The subject parcel is one of four lots that remain in its current configuration. All the other parcels have been split from four to five acres down to two acres. We have residential zoning to the north and the west, and also to the northwest. Some images of the property taken from Valley Vista Drive and the access road along Highway ninety-two. And some additional shots showing Valley Vista Drive viewing east and Highway ninety-two viewing north. Subject parcel highlighted in yellow. And again, this would be a westerly view of the subject parcel, again highlighted in yellow. The applicant did provide a sketch plan demonstrating the approximate location of the single-family residence. Being a down zoning, the applicant did not have to mail out neighborhood notices. Staff did between twenty and twenty-two March mail notices, post the property, and publish a legal ad. Specifically, staff mailed thirteen notices to property owners within three hundred feet, receiving three responses in favor. Zoning regulations contain fifteen factors used by staff and the commission to analyze rezoning applications. Five of these factors are not applicable. Of the remaining ten factors, they do comply. Factors in favor of approval, as stated previously. The request does comply with ten of the ten applicable factors. The proposed use is compatible with the residential growth pattern in the area. Downzone does reduce the number of allowed principal dwellings. And there's no opposition from the nearby property owners. Factors against approval not have been identified. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, that concludes staff's presentation for docket RZ two four zero four. We're available for your questions. And the applicant is present.
Thank you. This is the time for the applicant to make a statement. Mr. Jackson? You have ten minutes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Thank you. My full name is Wesley Jackson. I live in New Mexico, ninety-seven Nugent Road, Edgewood, New Mexico, eight seven zero one five. We're planning on moving here. My wife grew up very close to this property. Really appreciate you guys' time on this matter. We're excited to move here. We're excited to go through the owner-builder program. We're very excited about that. We don't have that option in New Mexico, and that's something that's really, really exciting here. So I definitely appreciate your time and your consideration on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is open on this matter. Are there any comments from other persons? Hearing done. This would also be the time for the applicant's rebuttal. We'll waive that, sir. Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Commission discussion. Do you have any questions for staff or the applicant? Hearing none. Mr. Taylor, your summary?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ twenty-four zero four to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. There are no conditions associated with this request.
This time, I'd like to call for the motion.
I'm here.
Mr. Martsky?
I'm going to recommend approval of docket RZ twenty-four dash zero four. The board of supervisors, rezoning the parcel one oh four twelve dash zero one six from RU two to RU four. Factors in favor of approval constitute defying this agreement.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Mr. Saunders, thank you. Is there any final discussion? We'll call for the question by roll call. Mr. Montgomery?
Given that there are absolutely no factors against this approval, which is pretty rare in this commission, I'm voting in favor.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Martsky?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Ms. Vickett?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. This motion does pass. Congratulations, sir. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors' meeting dealing with this docket. Thank you. Moving on to item two, docket SU twenty-four dash zero three. This is at Ramsey Road and Dusty Tyra Road and Internet Tower. The applicant is Latoya Phipps. Is she present? Okay, who's going to speak this evening? Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, your report, please. Oh, okay.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is the staff presentation for docket SU twenty-four zero three, a special use authorization for a communication facility with the tower. The applicant is Dakota Pro. The property is located on Ramsey Road, approximately one three-quarter mile east of Benson on parcel one two three three zero zero five J. The property is owned R thirty-six. The plan is, plan designation is developing in the growth areas, rural community. Current use of the property, the property is undeveloped. And again, the proposed use is a communication facility with seventeen-foot tower and supporting ground equipment. Again, the property is located just east of the Benson, Arizona jurisdictional limits. Subject property is also located, it's located approximately nine hundred north of Ramsey Road and does not front on a public street. Some images of the property taken from Ramsey Road. This would be on the southern parcel, which is owned by under common ownership. This is a couple of photographs. One is a blow-up showing the existing facility. Our understanding is that, similar to a case that was hurt by the commission last year in November, there was another small-scale internet provider that was unaware that they were required to obtain a special use permit. They built the structure and then came in after the fact. Similar circumstance in this case. Some drone imagery. This would be facing south. You can see in the foreground the, I guess you could say, tower. It's a seventy-foot lattice structure with Wi-Fi radio equipment. There is another, there's a water tank on top of the property installed by the property owner as well. And another image, this would be viewing more or less to the east, again showing the existing communication facility. So the applicant's provided a site plan. The location is five hundred and fifteen feet. The setbacks are five hundred and fifteen feet to the south and to the west, hundred and forty-five feet to the north, in excess of about a quarter mile to the east. The total project area itself is approximately thirty-six square feet. This is a rendering of the site. Obviously, it uses stone for counterweight to hold the structure up. Solar panel provides power. We'll go into a lot of specs on this one. We'll allow the applicant to talk to those issues. So as discussed previously, the zoning regulations really don't have a considered this. They're somewhat dated in comparison. We don't have a lot of internet provider provisions in the zoning regulations, so it falls under the new tower component for communication facilities. Some of these may not apply to this project. The applicants have stated, much in a similar case to the previous one, they don't anticipate providing any providers or colocations. So we've acknowledged that waiver through a condition, leading that to the discretion of the applicant. There are ten special use factors that are used to evaluate special use applications. Staff's findings that traffic circulation, which we'll get into a little bit on the use of a private easement on Dusty Tyra and some previous issues associated with that, as well as the site development standards that are unique to communication towers, which has to deal specifically with colocation. Otherwise, this request does comply with most of those factors. So to summarize, factors in favor complies with eight applicable factors. These facilities are pretty low intensity, very portable uses, effective in low-density residential areas. My understanding is that this facility serves approximately, I believe, twenty-three subscribers. And property elevations similar to this are desirable for these types of facilities because it ultimately results in the reduction in height of what would otherwise be a potentially taller tower or facility. Factors not in favor. We have received opposition from nearby property owners to the west and service vehicles using the unapproved private road Dusty Tyra to access the project site. So the applicant did mail notices as required by the zoning regulations on eight February. And staff followed up with between twenty and twenty-two March mailing notices, posting the property, and publishing a legal ad. Staff did mail sixteen notices to property owners within six hundred feet. And based on this graphic, staff received three in opposition and three in favor. Two in favor were from the property owner. And one to the south along Ramsey Road was from an adjacent property owner. Given some of the conversation in the past history with the access to the property from Dusty Tyra, we, in blue, that would be the route that would be taken from Ramsey Road to the project site using Dusty Tyra. The red would demonstrate an easement that would be used up through the applicant's parcel. So our understanding, and the applicant can probably speak to this a little bit more clearly than I can, but our understanding is that the property owner really doesn't want Dakota Pro to use the easement through his property, as depicted in red, deeming it potentially unsafe to passenger vehicles and more for off-road vehicles just based on grade, and it's just not improved. With that said, however, the parcels immediately to the west, certainly the most adjacent parcel to the west, did suffer some damage to the easement in front of their location back in January when this structure was constructed. And this shows some of the rutting that occurred. It had been apparently considerable amount of rain. And the trucks certainly taking up the heavy materials with which to act as a counterweight to the, to the tower itself, rutted up the road. And my understanding, and basically is represented by Dakota Pro, within a day or two after receiving an email complaint from one of the property owners, they went out and leveled the ruts and then laid down some fresh gravel. And this view is good because in the background, you can actually see the cistern at the top or the water tower or the water tank. You can't really see the communication facility, but these are similar views. And the damage was pretty much restricted to the parcel to the west. And I believe that the property owners are online and wish to speak on this issue. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, that concludes staff's presentation of docket SU twenty-four zero three. We're prepared to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This is the time for the applicant's statement. If you'd come forward, sir. You have ten minutes. If you'd state your name and address before speaking.
My name is Bill Bosmane. I'm the president of Dakota Pro. We are a small internet provider out of Tucson and obviously service areas of Cochise County. My address and work address is four thousand three Speedway Boulevard, Suite one eleven, Tucson, Arizona, eight five seven one two. Appreciate the council's consideration of our request. First off, we did not understand we needed to get a permit for this. We now understand, and we will make sure we follow that on every future project that we do. Our business is providing high-speed internet to rural subscribers. And the facility that you see here is a kind of a best case, as was already mentioned, that by doing it up on a ridge top, then we don't have to put up the elevation because our service is delivered line of sight. And in a lot of cases, we're one of the only options that people have to get internet out in rural, rural areas. And that's, that's been a big demand that we've had. This site was chosen because of the proximity to a number of customers. I think the number right now is twenty-four customers that are being served. When we scheduled to put this tower in place, unfortunately, we were experiencing a lot of rains. And we did create some ruts in the road. That was obviously unintentional. The, we did get a complaint from one of the neighbors. And we felt we were very responsive. We were out the next day and graded it. Had to wait till it dried out a little bit, but graded as soon as we could. And then the following day or two, we, we had gravel put in. So we actually did an improvement on the road. I will say that this road has obviously had this problem for a while because it's a gully where water sits. So we actually think we made the neighborhood a little bit better, but I'm not sure if everyone agrees. So the nature of this is it's already built. There's no need to bring in, we don't really even have big trucks. Our biggest truck is a Toyota Tundra pickup truck. So we don't bring in big vehicles. But now that this is built, there's, the only thing that we'd be going in is doing service work, changing a radio, changing out batteries or router or something like that. So the traffic going in and out is going to be very minimal. And we don't expect there to be any, any future damage to any, any of the parcels. As far as the, the access, the property owner had asked us to, to consider using the alternate route. And, and we, that was actually our original plan. And when we got out there and started doing a sidewalk of that access, the property owner determined that it was unsafe. And it was going to be a great liability to have us try to go through that, that, that alternate route with the condition that that, that route was in. And so he gave us, basically said that it was, he directed us to use the, the existing route that has been shown here. Our understanding is that's a shared access and that, that's within his rights. But obviously, we're, we're a little bit frustrated that we can't get everybody's concerns addressed. Our belief is we've addressed the road. I think we've, like I said, were very responsive and made the improvements that we could. Our sense is that the, the neighbors that potentially are voicing against the project just simply don't want us there. And there's no, nothing that we can really do except say that we want to be there. There's, there's nothing for us to mitigate, is my point. We have towers like this all over Cochise County. We have it Santa Cruz. We have it Pima. And we tend to be very good neighbors. We tend to be very responsive to issues. And we try to fit in with the community because those are our customers, right? So we don't want to be in a mode where we're, we're not taking care of folks. So appreciate your consideration for the special use. We'd love to be able to stay there and take care of the customers that we're serving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The public hearing on this matter is now open. We'll call for comments from other persons. I don't have any forums. You said you had someone online?
Yes, Madam Chair. We do have, here's Tim and Laura Romer are online.
Hi. Yes, this is Tim and Laura Romer. We're the property owners that are just west of where the tower is. And we share a property line with the property that it's on.
Yeah, and I, I do want to acknowledge that Dakota Pro did come out. Our, our home is the one that the road was destroyed in front of. And once I contacted them, they did come out pretty quickly. We weren't too happy that they did retrieve dirt from our private property in order to fill in the divots, but they did improve it as far as bringing gravel. And so we do appreciate their quick response. But beyond the public comments that we stated, there's just been a lot of neighborhood confusion, and a lot of that has fallen on us because it is a private road. Dusty Tyra is privately maintained. It's not a county road or a city road. So about twenty-one residences maintain it. And so we had neighbors coming up to our house telling us flat out we needed to put up a fence, put up signs to deny their access. We had another neighbor call us and tell us that previous owners of our home had put up a gate to deny access over to that parcel. And then another neighbor as well, who, he's lived here about twenty years. And he stated that he didn't feel that, that the property owner had a right to use it. So because we had no idea, we just moved there in May of last year. So we ultimately ended up having to contact our attorney to get answers on this, which, you know, he stated that if this had been done the right way, as far as all of the neighbors receiving this notice and having the chance to come to this hearing ahead of time, a lot of these questions would have gotten answered.
Yeah. And just as far as, you know, also, one issue we have is we don't understand why more of our neighbors weren't able to have a vote since our road is being used. I mean, I understand other properties aren't within six hundred feet of the tower, but the road that we all are responsible for maintaining is being, was being used. And, and they, and they were not sent any letters and not allowed to voice, you know, their, their opinion or have a say in, in the use of the road. But, and then also, as far as Dakota Pro saying that they're the only option for, I mean, there's other options. I mean, we personally, we don't use it. We use another service, and we have other neighbors that use another service. So Dakota Pro isn't the only option. I mean, it is one of the few options, but it's definitely not the only option. And our, and there's actually much, you know, faster options. But, I mean, there's, there's multiple companies that use satellite internet in that area, in the area. There's at least three other companies.
And then did you want to talk to the condition of Dusty Tyra?
Yeah, I mean, and right now, there's a couple of places on the road, especially near our property, up at the top of the hill, where the road is starting to wash out. And we're trying to deal with that right now. But we're concerned with extra use that is going to deteriorate faster. And we're not, and we're concerned about the road, you know, parts of the road being able to collapse away because of constant use. But I mean, I understand they're saying now that they won't need to access it as much, but we don't know how much they're going to access.
Yeah, what does infrequent or occasional access mean? And I think that's what many of the other neighbors that have spoken to us are also concerned about because we're talking about a dirt road that's narrow. It's one-way. You know, if there's more than one car, we have to find some way to pull over so another person can pass. It's very primitive.
Yeah. And if the other road, I just feel like if the, if the homeowner that, that the tower is on, if he wants to have this tower and lease it to Dakota Pro, then he should give, he should make a safe way for them to access his, access his property from his property. Because the original application was not to use Dusty Tyra. It was to use Ramsey Road. And they're, they weren't just using Ramsey Road. They were using Dusty Tyra the entire time. So that's, 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 that's been our frustration.
Yeah, I think that's the biggest concern. Thank you for hearing our concerns.
Yes, thank you for hearing us out. And that's, that's all we have to say at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else online?
No, Madam Chair.
This is the time, then, for the applicant's rebuttal. Bill, would you spell your last name for me?
Bosmany, B as in boy. O-S-M-E-N-Y. Bosmany.
Thank you, sir.
Not really sure what I can, I can kind of respond to some of those concerns. I can say that the, we got our instructions to use Dusty Tyra from the property owner. We didn't realize that this was going to be an issue at all. And part of the reason we didn't realize, we had an old tower that had been there for years. There was maybe a hundred or two hundred feet away that we'd been using Dusty Tyra for years and never had any complaints about using the road up to that point. What happened is we tore that tower down and we moved it over to this new location because it was better for a variety of reasons. And so it never even hit our radar when Caleb, the property owner, said he wants us to use Dusty Tyra. That we're like, oh, well, we've been using that road already. It's, it, it just never hit the radar that it was, it was going to be a cause of concern. I will say, I will say, and, and because of that, I mean, the number of times we went out to the old tower will match what we're going to going out to the new tower. Construction is really the only time where you have a lot of activity. You're probably talking about twice a year on average. I mean, we might go out there in the winter because there's snow covering the solar panels and we've got to get the sun to generate some power for us. But I mean, these are not built to need a lot of attention. I mean, we go out of business if that was the case. So, you know, a couple of times a year with a light, light pickup truck is what we're talking about, the traffic level. So I guess that would be my, my response. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. The public portion of this is closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Do we have any questions for the applicant or staff?
Well, Madam Chair, those were my questions that were just answered. On occasional use being perhaps twice a year with a pickup truck. So that is relevant in my thinking. It's not a lot. And it seems like the gravel has already been dispersed. There's an effort to accommodate and then.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Anyone else? I do have one question, if you wouldn't mind coming back. We'll get your exercise in. So this issue of access, it does beg the question for me, what if you can't make peace with the neighborhood and use that private road? Then what will you do?
I wish Caleb was on, on the, on the docket so that he could address that. My understanding is, as one of the property owners, that he is participating in the maintenance of the road. So he feels like, what he's conveyed to us is he feels like he has the right to, to, to access, have people access that road. So he feels like he's within his rights to, to, to do this. I don't like to speak for someone else, but I'm sharing my, my understanding. I, this is the first time we've heard that there were three folks who were concerned about it. I, I, if I can get the contact information, I'd be happy to reach out and see if there's anything we can do to be a good neighbor and participate in what is obviously ongoing road maintenance. But I, I, you know, all, what I can say is we'll do the best we can to be good neighbors.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Bosmeny. And the second half of my question is for staff. Is there any legal impediment to approving this special use with their access unknown? It's really their, their problem to sort out?
Madam Chair, we would consider that a civil matter that would be formulated through the parties, but we can supplement the existing condition specifically to state that if there's not a private maintenance agreement in place, that there will be one required.
How does the rest of the commission feel about that stipulation?
Well, Madam Chair, I'm in favor of that.
I could add, since you're under staff recommendation, the applicant property owner shall repair any damage to Dusty Tyra cars by service vehicles, which again is one pickup truck visiting the facility site. So that agreement is already.
So that would seem to cover that as a condition of approval?
Seems so.
Okay. I'm satisfied. Any other question?
So Madam Chair and the board, you understand this as being a long-term agreement, not just a situational? No, I think it's satisfactory.
So many comments? All right, let's have the summary, please, Mr. Taylor.
Madam Chair, before this summary, I would like to, just for the record, note that we did receive one letter in favor. I cannot validate who the letter was from. They stated that they are resident along Dusty Tyra, but they did not provide a parcel number and their signature is really knowledgeable. We also received a letter in favor from a gentleman, Mr. Coleman, who happens to live outside the notification area. Staff recommends approval of docket SU 2403 for an existing communication facility with tower and supporting ground equipment with the following conditions. Applicant or property owner shall repair any damage to Dusty Tyra Road caused by service vehicles visiting the communication facility site. And the applicant has the discretion to accommodate additional providers per the requested waiver. And that goes back to the summary that we provided on the factors. I think as part of our discussion, because there is a commercial permit requirement, that could be, that the private maintenance agreement would fall under that if there's not one in place. So we really don't necessarily need to, per, per Ms. McLaughlin, we really don't need to modify that first condition.
Does that conclude your remarks?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
I would now like to call for the motion, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbaugh?
I move to approve docket SU 24-3 Ramsey Road Telecom with conditions of approval recommended by the staff. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact.
A second. Mr. Marksby, thank you. Is there any last discussion of this? Mr. Montgomery, how do you vote?
Hold on.
Mr. Limbaugh?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Marksby?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Ms. Vicket?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This motion passes. Congratulations. Anyone disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, or online at cochise.a z dot gov. Thank you. Like to move on to item three. RZ 24-05. This is a master development plan 24-01 also. The applicant requests recommendation of approval for an MDP and rezoning of 175 acres in Naco. Applicant is Savannah McDonald, representing the owner. Is Ms. McDonald present? Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor, your report.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is a staff presentation for dockets MDP 2401 and RZ 2405 for the Camp Riff project located in Naco, Arizona. The applicant is Savannah McDonald. The property is located at 1794 West Newell Street in Naco, encompassing parcels 10255002 and 005. The plan amendment is to approve the Camp Riff MDP, replacing the existing business and recreational open space land use designations identified in the Naco area plan, as well as concurrent rezoning request from R3604 to Plan Development District. Previous use of the property was for golf course, RV park lounge, restaurant, commonly referred to as the turquoise valley golf course in RV park. The proposed use is mixed use. Again, the property is located not too far south of our current location in Naco. Again, the zoning map demonstrates that the surrounding zoning is predominantly residential and rural. And the existing parcel has split zoning districts. This demonstrates the existing land use designation of the Naco area plan. It is recreational open space for both parcels with small sections designated for business use, which would encompass the previous restaurant as well as the RV park site. Some images of the property. The first image is taken from Newell. The other one is taken from, I believe, this kettle showing the gated access along that street that's basically used as a service entrance. And some additional photographs predominantly viewing east and northeast. And Newell Street viewing west and east along the property's frontage. Some drawn images of the site. These were taken with the previous special use application that was filed for a music pavilion that was heard by the Planning Commission back in November of 2023. This one in the foreground shows the principal structures and is more or less viewing in northwest. Another image viewing due west. An image viewing east with Newell Street to the right. And an image viewing northeast with adjacent residences to the west in the foreground. The applicant has provided a master development diagram showing the phased approach as well as a rendering showing what the potential for the site would look like and build out. To summarize the project, 175 acres, 480 dry campsites are proposed with 144 RV hookups with bath and shower facilities, 150 capacity wedding pavilion, 500 seat amphitheater, as well as playground, swimming pool, spaces for food trucks, walking path, as well as community garden space. Based on the applicant's submitted, and this was included with the agenda as appendix E, there was some economic analysis that was provided, demonstrating a build out of $38 million project over the course of five years. Estimated build out would be 2030. Potential job creation would be 40 to 65 jobs. An estimated $14 million impact on the Naco area, certainly within Cochise County. Naco Sanitary District and Hearthstone Water has responded. Hearthstone Water has issued a service letter, a will serve letter. And Naco Sanitary District, we received confirmation that this project would have access to that system as well as a statement of support separately. And the properties are located within the APS Southwest Gas and Century Lake service areas as well. As far as the rezoning to Plan Development District, there are 15 criteria in the zoning regulations that staff and planning commission and frankly, the board of supervisors as well will consider as far as rendering, whether a decision as to the appropriateness of the application. Compatible with existing development is a common theme for infill projects, you know, does it fit? We think that with the conditions in place, as well as the buffers that have been brought forward by the applicant, that we think it would be a compatible project and a good opportunity to, for reinvestment, economic reinvestment. Infill compatibility is not applied. It only applies to GB, LI, and HI, rezonings to business and industrial. And the applicant is not proposing any hazardous materials on the site. Madam Chair, relative to the master development plan, the factors in favor. The applicant has submitted applications for the MDP and PD that meet the requirements of the zoning regulations. The request does comply with 13 of the 15 applicable factors. And we have received support from nearby property owners. Factors against MDP approval would include opposition from nearby property owners as well as the proposed uses are more intense than historical uses, certainly more intense than the unused facility over the last five years, a big change, and could generate significant levels of traffic and noise. The factors in favor relative to the rezoning to Plan Development District, again, complies with those 13 applicable factors. Project is consistent with the Naco area plan goals for infill redevelopment and economic growth opportunities, as well as support from nearby property owners. Factors against would be opposition from nearby property owners. And very quickly, just the Naco area plan was adopted in 1998. And there are three basic takeaways from the plan. Number one is to preserve and protect its historic assets, cultural resources. Also is to preserve existing residential, which at that time was predominantly in the Old Town site of Naco. And certainly encourage opportunities for development, redevelopment, or infill projects to try to instill a little bit of economic growth in the community. Generally, the plan called for or anticipated population growth of about 50% up to 2016, and that hasn't happened. And not only has the population not grown as anticipated by the plan, the economic development opportunities haven't either. So as required by the zoning regulations as well as the comprehensive plan, the applicant sent out more than 300 notices and effectively overnoticed. They were only required by the comprehensive plan to send notices to property owners within 1,000 feet. So the applicant did send a little over 330 invitations, which summarized the project and also held a community meeting on 3 February. Staff followed that up, noticed, sending out notices as well, approximately 230 notices, posting the property and publishing a legal ad. And those activities occurred between 19 and 22 March. And to date, as far as folks that are on the notification list within that thousand-foot notification area for staff, we received 15 responses in favor and 12, 12 in opposition. We received significant support from folks who are not within the notification area, but as a stakeholder of the Naco community feel that they, they wanted to participate in the process as well, even though they did not receive a notice. And just kind of stating the obvious, the majority of opposition has come from the residential area to the west. Madam Chair and Commissioners, that concludes staff's presentation of dockets MDP 2401 and RZ 2405. We are available for any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This is the time for the applicant's statement. Ms. McDonald? You have 10 minutes. Please state your name and address and observe the time clock next to you there.
Savannah McDonald with poster Murto McDonald at 317 North Court Avenue, Tucson, Arizona, 85701. Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for letting us present and, and discuss and, and discuss more about like what, what we're proposing on the site, which is intended to be inclusive and including community input. Some good events. Yeah. So Matthew, thank you for the presentation as well. He went over much of this. The only things I wanted to add here from this slide is the, the, that there are no deed restrictions currently on the property. The city of Bisbee issued a corrective deed on the 20th of July in 2015, removing the condition of the reversion clause and the reversion clause regarding the property's use as a golf course. So I know that's, there's been some communication about that. I just wanted to clarify that and provided that documentation to you in your supplemental materials. And as Matthew mentioned, that the proposed plan is consistent with that recreational open space designation and the general plan. I just wanted to talk a little bit about, because we're talking about that open space. We care about this environment. We care about this place. We, we respect it. And, and so, and we want to respect the neighbors and, and, and respond to their concerns as well. So after the community meeting, we actually increased our proposed buffers or setbacks on the property. We heard from the western neighbor, it was a little bit more, so we increased that to 100. And now that I'm seeing the graph about the, sorry, the, the western side neighbors, I think we could increase that buffer as well to extend that gesture of that additional buffer and landscaping screen to the proposed uses. The one difference is that on Newell Street, the parking will be in that buffer, but we'll, and, and that's consistent with where the parking is now on Newell Street. But there'll be a 10 feet, a 10-foot landscape screen there. In terms of the vegetation, a lot is non-indigenous, but we want to keep that that's healthy, is existing to remain. And all the landscape will be selected within the list of acceptable drought tolerant plants and native species. Our parent areas and floodways will be preserved and respecting their flood zone regulatory requirements. So you can kind of see those zones on our master plan, concept plan. And we're just trying to preserve those views, views right with the single level campsite development. So just kind of a broad overview of the master plan. On the north parcel, there is an existing pond where we're proposing dry camping on that north parcel. Because it's north of Green Bush Draw, the bathroom and shower facilities will be on septic up there on that side. In the central and eastern portions of the south parcel, also dry camping is proposed on the western in a future phase is where we would propose RV hookups. I'm proposing, and I'll, you know, kind of show it a little bit more in another slice too, but a walking path that's for the public, that's really to interconnect all these spaces and make it more accessible and pedestrian and bicycle friendly. And then, as you can see on that south edge, is the Newell Street entrance. And just talking about the proposed. And just talking about the proposed uses a little bit, as is shown now, three hundred and seventy-seven dry campsites and RV hookups. These recreation activities would be the rehabilitated clubhouse with restaurant, the stage and open event space. Not formalized, really more. Envisioned as a kind of a gathering space for those events. And, you know, putting out your your blanket on the grass and enjoying the music or the movie. A multipurpose pavilion is also something we're looking at next to the community garden where. Farmers can come or even artists to come and we can share in a marketplace setting. Like I said, the community garden, playground pool, wedding pavilion and camping services building, really meant to be, again, like I mentioned, an inclusive. You know, especially compared to the golf course, you know, all cultures, all genders, all ages, even financial backgrounds, a place for for all, especially the greater community. Specifically addressing the concerns of of sound and light. Outdoor event space operating hours will be limited to ten, sorry, eleven AM to twelve PM on Friday and Saturday. To six PM on Sunday and ten PM on other nights. Like I mentioned, outdoor events may vary from movies to movies in the park to stage performances. But we're going to work really carefully with the acoustical engineer to mitigate the the sound impact. On that use in the in the landscape and on the site and around. Same with lighting, being very careful about the the possible pollution of of outdoor lighting and using full cutoff and all the. More limiting outdoor lighting designs. And then circulation alluded to you a little bit intended to be kind of a slow, low impact and very pedestrian and bike friendly. System of roads, twenty-four feet wide and sixteen feet wide for one way, kind of connecting everything. Including that perimeter trail system that leaves throughout the project. Providing adequate parking, so there's no overflow really at each campsite, it's shared areas like restroom and group campsites and then that. And then those larger lots for that central recreation area. And we have a traffic study that was also included in the application materials, which show three new roadway connections along Newell. That's in addition to the one that exists, the one that exists was recommended to kind of align with the property to the south, so we will also be doing that. There is a connection shown at Kettle Avenue, but that is really just for emergency vehicles only and will not be for public use. Here's a little zoom into that more central recreation area. You can see the walking paths, the dry camping sites, the deep road. The existing pond that's right there, just north of the existing clubhouse. Where we're proposing the kind of the open stage and outdoor performance area. You can see the existing clubhouse and maintenance facilities that will be rehabilitated. And then to the east, kind of that multipurpose pavilion, farmer's market, community garden. And then parking right along that Newell. Setback, but also toward the west as needed for the events. I'm not going to get into the utilities too much, just know that we've been reaching out to them and getting little sir letters and coordinating that. There are plenty in the area. In terms of the community feedback, like Matthew mentioned, we held the neighborhood event. It was about seventy-three attendees. We have thirty signatures collected. During that event for supporters of the project, we also posted an informational website that had. These plans and all sorts of information about the project so that anyone could log on and view that. And then, like I mentioned, we originally had that fifty foot landscape buffer and increased it after we kind of talked to some residents at that community meeting. There was an additional recommended changes, including the fact that the two existing ponds. That would, well, to just to clarify that then we will continue to use them. For minimal irrigation and recreational fishing, again, open to the greater community to use. And but we'll receive a new liner on those existing ponds. It was recommended that the five foot walking path in some areas, especially kind of high traffic areas and especially along Newell be increased to ten feet. And widened for greater foot traffic, so we are very happy and willing to do that. As well as replace any inferior existing perimeter fencing, such as barbed wire and. And replacing that with chain link and for consistent, continuous parameter and look.
Thank you. We now open the public portion of this hearing. It's time for comments from other persons. You will have five minutes to speak. First is Al Anderson on Teams. Mr. Anderson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Very well. State your name and address and you have five minutes.
Thank you. Al Anderson, nine forty-two Timstone Canyon, Bisbee, Arizona. As a downtown Bisbee commercial property owner, I support the plan to construct Camp Reef in Naco. This project will benefit Bisbee and Cochise County and will have little impact on the surrounding homes. The camp is on the edge of Naco and has direct access to Naco Highway, so it should not negatively impact local traffic. It will also provide a free shuttle bus to Bisbee and back, which will lower the traffic on that route. Campgrounds are inherently quiet and this upscale campground will have its strict rules that control any excess noise. Any noise from the very occasional outdoor music events will be heavily regulated by existing county ordinances. The camp's restaurant and indoor event center and other amenities will give Cochise County new and much needed facilities. There's a constant stream of tourists and RVs visiting Bisbee in southeast Arizona, but there are very few places they can stay overnight. These campsites will draw tourists who will in turn create a market for additional restaurants and businesses that, I hope. Will revitalize some of the boarded up buildings in downtown Naco. Fall and spring have normally been the only profitable months for Bisbee merchants, but an RV park for snowbirds will give our winter economy a much needed boost. Eco tourism in this county brings twenty-eight million dollars a year and generates five hundred and ninety jobs. Camp Reef would add to this due to its proximity to important wildlife areas such as the San Pedro Riparian National Conservation Area, Ramsey Canyon. Sulfur Springs Valley and Lightwater Draw Wildlife Area. None of those places provide sufficient designated areas for camping, so this camp will fit, fill that need, plus help stop wildcat camping and. In a place where the campers can enjoy our county's beautiful night skies. Camp Reef will be landscaped using the county's approved vegetation list, which provides a diversity of flowering and food source plants to enhance wildlife habitat. And the camp will become an area for its guests to view that wildlife. The turf at the former golf course used about fifty-one million gallons of water per year, but only benefited a small group of golfers. This camp will use a fraction of that amount of water due to it irrigating much less land and have more hardscaping. And that water will benefit thousands of people each year. The two existing small ponds will remain and become recreational fishing ponds. But will first be lined to stop leakage and lower water use. State of the art, low flow water saving fixtures will be used throughout. Naco and nearby Alaprieta are gateways for travelers entering Mexico who want to avoid the overcrowded crossings at Nogales and Lukeville. This campground will provide travelers a place of respite. Before, after, and during such journeys and boost our economy. This land was a golf course. They are a dying thing in the hot deserts southwest. This land would still be one. If it was ever profitable enough to support all the staff required to run a golf course. So what will it become? I'd say if I was a neighbor, I'd choose a campground over all other probable alternatives that could afford to pay the property taxes. Please support Cochise County by supporting this land use application to construct the much needed Camp Reef in Naco. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. James Terry, please. Are you online, sir? We'll call for you again in a moment.
Hello.
Oh, is it James Terry?
Yes, hello.
Yes, sir. What is your address? And you have five minutes to speak.
Oh, thank you so much. Twenty-one twenty-five West Sepeda Street. I moved here because of the golf course. And unfortunately, things change. My real concern here is fire. Currently. The current owner hasn't really taken care or complied with the local fire ordinances here and cleared up brush and stuff. There's trash everywhere over there along the boundaries. And my feeling is that he should first clean the place up and then. Talk to us about what he wants to do with it. The trees, he left them all to die. There's dying trees out there. Everywhere and they're just, you know, it's a fire hazard for us here and this is where we live. Now, all you people, all you folks on the board, how would you like this if this was moving into your neighborhood? And all these cars would be passing by your home every day. Naco is a peaceful, harmonious, harmonic place right now. And we we have the the fort coming in, the Camp Naco, which is going to provide us with what all the community here is supporting. And they're not supporting Mr. Lewis's project. The community of Naco is supporting Camp Naco, and that's what we want. We don't want. This this situation and all the traffic and the dust. And then you say dry camping. Well, it's a fire area. And kids and this and that, and there's no no hazardous material. Well, propane. If there's an accident. And then security. We're within a thousand yards of the border here. That has to be a concern. That has to be a concern. When you start moving in. Campers and concerts and people, it's going to be very hard to secure. And that has to be a consideration because of of the location of the place. Unfortunately, yeah, there are not many options. With without it being in a golf course anymore, and I wish that, you know, he would have applied for a historic grant. To restore nine holes of the golf course and put an RV park in and forget about the rock and roll venue because it's really hard to control. If he said Taylor Swift was going to be there, do you think they could control that? All the people that would come? Or whoever. It's 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 with all the boundaries and the security issues and the cops here are already overrun. Underpaid and understaffed. So I don't know, and the sheriffs as well. They've got the border on their plate as well. So my my feelings are infrastructure and security. The roadways, there's two two little one-laid roads down into into Naco. You know, what's it going to be like when five hundred or a thousand people are coming in and out of there and the dust and everything? You know, we live here, we didn't. I didn't bargain for this and, you know, I know I can't change the world and and, you know, I know there's. We need money, the county needs money and I understand all that, but at the expense of this, of taking a little town and turning it into a circus. The restaurant, who can afford it? Who can afford it? Not the people around here. So, you know, it's great. I mean, we could afford the restaurant that was at the golf club because it was cheap and it was good. But when they, who knows what they'll put in there? You know, it's going to be great for other people. It's not going to be great for us neighbors. That's all I can say. And I appreciate your time and considerations and concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Richard Montgomery. Name and address. Pardon me? Thank you, sir. Dorothy Keesling. Name and address, please, ma'am, and watch your speaker's clock.
Dorothy Keesling. I live at three five seven two South Towner, which is across the street from. Seventh Fairway of Old Turkey's Alley. As this last speaker just said, Naco is a quiet place and I think most of the. Most of the people there would like it kept quiet. I'm concerned about the traffic. That this proposal would bring. I'm concerned about the noise, especially with the music thing, if there would be such. And I really question anybody's thought of that many tent campers in an area like that. Tent campers go up the woods. They don't. They don't go places like this. So I think that's a misconception on their part. I also have a concern. I saw Hearthstone Water said that they could provide, but there was a little glitch in what I was seeing there. I'm not sure what that was all about. But we get notices from the old Naco water saying. Conserve water, don't wash car, you know, all this stuff. And how can they provide for all those RVs? I have an RV. Uh-uh. I don't think they can provide. The golf course has its own well for part of it and then reclaim the water for part of it. But so I don't see where that water is coming from either. I appreciate that this proposal was knocked down. By the commission a few months ago and I I hope that you will do that again. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Janelle McCrery.
Thank you. I'm Janelle McCrery. I live at three oh, three six oh five South Towner. My property or our property abuts the golf course. Camp Reef, it's a nice logo, interesting name. But what does it mean? I looked, according to Mer- Merriam-Webster's dictionary. It's a constantly repeated musical phrase. Especially as a background for a soloist. Or a phrase as. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. Or a for the final chorus. If you ask me, a series of musical riffs performed by a series of musicians comprises a concert. That concert will be held. In the open air pavilion. And once again, too much noise, too many people, too much traffic. And this pavilion has been disguised. But it's nothing more than a music pavilion. They call it a multipurpose one, but it's multipurpose with amplifiers. And the master plan. Looks very much like the rewind master plan that was proposed and vetoed in twenty nineteen. That included nine holes of golf. This one includes a community garden. It's my understanding that Camp Naco wants a community garden. I doubt that Naco can sustain one, much less two. Our property value went down when the golf course closed. And I find it hard to believe that having a hundred and thirty RV. RVs parked by our fence will improve our property value. I imagine it'll go down. Because it will make our yard and patio area virtually useless. Naco is a small, rural, quiet, unincorporated town. Community. And please, let's keep it that way. We don't need this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please, Christopher Will Hoyt. Name and address, please.
My name is Christopher Michael Will Hoyt. I live at thirty-six nineteen South Towner. I didn't see my check mark on the map. I would have been one of those approved under Janelle's next door neighbor immediately to the right. We've got the lot, the biggest lot right there on the corner that comes rolling into the golf course. With a hundred foot buffer and the location of the pavilion being up by the clubhouse. From my back porch, which is right next to hers, I won't even be able to see it. Might be able to hear it, but it probably won't be able to see. The golf course was a drag when it was a golf course. Didn't make any money. And the people that didn't go to it were few, not a whole. Didn't make any money and the people that didn't show up to it were a few, not a whole lot. Maybe a few weddings and occasional things like this, but this will bring people in from all over. Opportunities, money for people who work in the area. Local vendors can come to it. And being somebody who lives right on the golf course, I see it as, well, the only opportunity I've seen come to Naco to improve it in any fashion since the golf course was there. There's no other businesses. There's no long line of rich guys from up north who want to come down and make things happen. There's this and from this, a lot can be done. Many satellite businesses can be built around it. And if I am correct, I believe the golf course is a part of the Naco tax structure. If this went through, it would become part of the Naco tax structure and that would inevitably increase the value of my home, which I'm very interested in. And I just think all around, it would be a much better idea for this particular population. I've got two kids. I'm not retired on a golf course, looking to spend the rest of my life there just playing games. I need to build a future for the people I'm living around and living with. And in a town that has no economic opportunities like this one, it's next to impossible. This is the best bet we've got right now for something like that to become a viable solution for the town of Naco becoming more than just a really quiet, not much going on township. I live there, love it, but if it had more opportunity, it would be worthwhile. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Charles Bany.
My name's Charles Bany, 3717 South Willow Way, Naco, Arizona. And I'm the vice president of the Naco Sanitary District. The Camp Riff plan will benefit the economy of our regional communities and allow for better use of the defunct country club. The Naco Colony has been a designated colony since 1995. Since 1995, the Naco community has received zero funds from community development block grants and HUD colonial set of sites, while every other colony in Cochise County has been funded and improved. Mr. Joseph Lewis has the best plan for Naco and the regional communities, including Bisbee and Sonoro. He's done more economic research regarding the Naco Colony than Cochise County has. His plan will increase tax revenues while providing housing, recreation, entertainment and sports. No other current plan in Cochise County addresses the long-term needs of the Naco Colonial. The Naco Sanitary District benefits from this plan. Since annexing Camp Riff to the NSD, will provide property taxes and capital improvements for every resident in this Naco census data place. Most residents will see their property taxes decrease if Camp Riff is annexed into NSD and more connections are provided to the local property owners. The decades of neglect that has brought economic decay to Naco begins to be remediated if the Camp Riff variance is approved. Mr. Lewis listens to the Naco community and has provided an opportunity for growth and housing that no other developer has even considered for our regional economic needs. If Camp Riff is approved, then our community will once again have a country clubhouse for dances, weddings and wakes. Our community would like to have more opportunities for our workforce. We would like to see walkways along Green Bush Draw that attract visitors both Camp Riff and Camp Naco. Camp Riff will provide more tax revenue to Naco than any other project, including Camp Naco. For these reasons, the Naco community supports Camp Riff and Mr. Lewis. And I'd like to just say, I grew up at the country club. I spent all of my summers there. I'm really sad to see that we can't have a country club. We're watching our golf courses diminish as the middle class does. We've been depopulated in Bisbee and Naco for the last 20 years and this is an opportunity to start to turn our economic development in a more positive direction. So I support that for this reason and our community does too. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Bruce Coonley? I'll let you say it when you get here.
That's fine. Coonley's fine.
Your address, please.
1791 West Newell. That's my RV park on the bottom of that picture there. I own that park. And we got put into a world of hurt. Well, Mr. Lewis closes golf course, but we've made quite a good comeback and thinking about putting in more RV spaces and that empty space on the right there. By the way, that's a real picture. It's a real RV park down there and I don't have any clue why we need another RV park right there when this one is almost never full and has capacity to add more spaces. I was reading an article a couple of days ago by about one of my awful favorite authors and he had bought a cabin in Montana and down around the corner of the lake from him, they had a campground similar to that. And he said, they defile this place. They come in on motorcycles, they yell all weekend and Sunday night they steal your dog on the way home. And that's what, that's what happens at campgrounds, open fires. Can you imagine 600 open fires over there? What kind of fire danger is that to all the houses up and around the hills? I can't imagine that. And why not, instead of doing all this grandiose stuff, you know, Mr. Lewis is quite the trap record of not getting things done. We've got an empty historical high school building where nothing's going on except for a thread or not. I don't know what. He stood in front of the county commissioners and said he wouldn't make it a hotel and he's trying to make it a hotel and he won't make it, won't do anything with it. Unless they give him permission, we'll make it a hotel. Then why not just let him put in a concert venue in the restaurant that's there now and maybe give him 20 or 30 places for people to camp and see if he can make that happen? He hasn't made anything happen. And as I said, I have spare RV spaces there too. Just like to reiterate a few things. I've heard other people say, we've got people who work for the Border Patrol that live in our park. And I've asked them, do you think that having 600 RV spaces up there is going to be a potential way for people to sneak in? And he said, most definitely. By the way, I did, I gave, I'm sorry, I thought there was only three of you, so there's six of you, but they're kind of going like this with this idea that there's a deed restriction. There is a deed restriction. It is, there's two different people who have deed restrictions on this land. The back nine was property that was deeded by Rosemead Water, a water company out of California. And the people who bought the RV park, bought the golf course from the city of Bisbee talked Rosemead Water into dominating land to them to use for the back nine of the golf course. And there's a paragraph in that deed that says, if that isn't a golf course, we get our land back. And that's, they've sent letters to Mr. Lewis. They've sent letters to the county and I believe you got those in your package in addition to what I just handed you, right? And then in 1930, the Newell family and the Hughes family got incorporation. They deeded land to the city of Bisbee. This land here where the pond is for a golf course and also put this property has to be a golf course in that deed. And I'm getting different opinions from different attorneys, but it seems that even though they had, the city had, I'm not sure exactly the word, but they had that language struck from this deed. They didn't have the right to do that. And the message is, is that's not done. That's, it's not legally done and maybe we shouldn't be doing anything until we get that figured out. I saw in the, on the wall at the post office in Naco, a summary that may have done.
Yes, sir, it does. I'm sorry.
Can I just finish that one sentence?
Finish your sentence.
Pardon?
Yes, finish your sentence.
So I saw a summary from the sanitation district that said they were giving, setting aside a capacity for this project. And once that capacity was set aside or allocated, there will be no more capacity for the sanitation district in Naco. So the sanitation district would be full.
Thank you, Mr. Coonley.
Thank you.
One more speaker. Stephen Day. Name and address, please, sir.
My name is Stephen Thomas Day. I live at 3729 South Willow Way, Naco, Arizona. I am chairman of the board of the Naco Sanitary District. We have been working closely with Mr. Lewis in his development project. We have more than ample capacity in our sewer system, not only to handle Mr. Lewis's project, but also to handle the Camp Naco project and to basically fill in all of the empty spaces in Naco. We have been working closely with USDA and all of the EPA, Rural Community Access Corporation and WIFA. We are getting grants for our wastewater treatment facility and to increase its capacity, also to expand the wastewater treatment system, to include all of those areas of the town site that have not been, have names in them yet for some reason they're supposed to, but don't. The other issues, we've also entered into an agreement or we're entering into an agreement with Mr. Lewis that if he annexes his property, because it's not, it's just a very expensive piece of property into the tax district, it would reduce the tax rates for sewage for every individual in our town. That's what I'm considering. The other issue is that, why can't Naco have nice things? I mean, we're a community that's got 1,100 people in it. Forty-eight percent of those are children, the rest are working adults. Ninety-six percent of our community works. The other, the additional amount of our community are like me, are retired or like being, you know, like a public official. But our children have no playground. They have no playground. We've been in Columbia for 35 years, but we have not got one penny of Columbia set aside. We'd really like to have a, you know, we're a nice town. We'd like it to become a little better and we feel that if we allow Mr. Lewis to work with us and he's been working with us directly, we would supply him with the proper amount of sewer service. He could develop his 144 sites, which is about 14,000 gallons a day of sewage, 300 camp sites, say, so about another 10,000 gallons for the sewage. We have 85,000 gallon capacity. We're at 85,000 now, so that puts us at about 60,000, 65,000, which plenty of room left over. We've just finished filling out for a search grant. We're putting up for the engineering, so we're getting a search grant to engineer all of that. But the big thing is like, I want my community to become a better place. You know, it's a wonderful place. We're surviving, but we'd like to thrive. The grants we're receiving will improve it. We've been offered a community change grant. So my, you know, during my election, I was elected by 80% of the population. Most of those people can't be here right now. Like I said, they're at work. There's a large number of people in here that know that and they come in here and use that as a way to, you know, shut things like this down because I know the people who actually live in town are at work right now or they're nuclear families. They're at home having dinner with their children. That's kind of what Naco is like. A nuclear family community, two working adults, children. Most of them can't be here. So since they elected me to represent them, that's what I'm here doing. The people I talk to, for the most part, a majority of the population that I talk to is totally in line with this. It's going to bring parks, it's going to bring a place for them to walk their dogs, a place to go with their children on weekends after they go to mass, things like that. They'd be here to tell you that right now, but like I said, they're probably at work or they're probably at home with their children, having dinner with their families because that's how they do things. I don't see why this, why there are so many people that don't want Naco to develop. I think maybe they think they can come in here and quash competition because they think maybe it might compete with something in Bisbee. The last time it was turned down, someone actually said, why do we need a music venue down there? We already have one in Bisbee. Well, we have houses in Bisbee and stores in Bisbee and all sorts of other things in Bisbee. You know, why do we need those in Naco? It would be nice. We don't have stores. We don't have a restaurant. We don't have a, you know. We have nothing. We have a bar and we have a post office and a school, right? We have no businesses, no parks for our children. It was literally nothing. Meanwhile, Bisbee's colonies get millions and half a million dollar a year to whack and we get nothing. So this would be a perfect opportunity to improve the community in a way to bring people from out of the area in to enjoy the natural beauty, because look, it's a beautiful view from down there, and bring money in from out of the area and spend it in Naco. That money generates sales tax, which it could be used to improve the system and just let me finish really quickly and to improve the system and to improve our town and to make it a better, more thriving community for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Day. We will have one more speaker, please. Kimberly Wells.
Hi. I'm a fairly new resident to Naco.
What is your address, ma'am?
3729 South Towner. And I'm in favor of development of what I consider probably the most beautiful parcel in the area. Unfortunately, I agree, the trees are dying. It hasn't been cared for. And my biggest concern, like the others, is fire. But RV parks have several negative effects on the environment, public safety and mental health. The infrastructure would expand, water, electricity, sewage, and the impact on the existing environment. Land degradation. The constant movement of RVs can lead to soil erosion and damage the plant life. The water supply and wastewater management. I'm very skeptical of our existing waste sanitation and wastewater management as it exists today. So I don't think this project should be approved without an environmental impact assessment. And if you open the door to RVs, it's not going to be 144. All those, over time, all those dry campsites, if you open that door, all those dry campsites will pretty soon be filled with RVs too. And I consider RVs a blight on the landscape. Considering climate change and that your average RV only gets six to 10 miles per gallon, I don't think this community should be doing anything to encourage more and more RVs. But if you look across the country, these RV parks are very popular developments, especially in Florida. So if you have all these campsites, you're going to have fireworks, guns. Naco actually is noisy. You get music from Mexico until 3 o'clock in the morning that, I mean, it's really loud. So I support the trails. I support the park aspects. I would have supported a music pavilion. I just don't support the RV and the camping. And I want to see this parcel developed, but the current plan, like I said, I don't think RVs is the way to go. And that 144 is just the beginning.
This concludes the public remarks. This is the time for the applicant's rebuttal. Ms. McDonald? This concludes the public remarks. This is the time for the applicant's rebuttal. Ms. McDonald?
Afternoon, members of the board. My name is Joseph Lewis. I reside sixty-seven Main Street, Bisbee. The developer. Thank you for the time today. Did a good discussion. You know, and I listened to the, I listened to a lot of great comments, both positive and negative, and you know, we did have the community meeting, and we heard a lot of feedback in that community meeting, and we tried to respond to some of that. The old saying, you're never going to please all the people all the time, is definitely true, and this is no exception. I'm sure if you asked twenty different people what they would like to see on the Turquoise Valley Golf Course, you'd get twenty different answers. From our perspective, we believe this is a good development. This is a development that... Let me back up a little bit. After I closed the golf course, it was mentioned that we tried to keep nine holes and develop the other nine holes into an RV resort, the front nine. That was kind of rejected by the community that felt that we really needed to have all eighteen holes. And at that time, I was keeping the golf course open and was losing thirty thousand dollars a month, but I was trying to keep an element of the golf course open. So sometimes that history gets a little bit lost when I'm seen as the guy that closed the golf course, which I was. I was the fifth owner in five years. The other four had gone bankrupt. Anyway, we're here where we are. I put it on the market for the property on the market. I believe in the property. I put it on the market, though, because it didn't look like I was going to do anything with it. It was on, sat on the market for two years. Frankly, nobody was interested. It, I think it takes a developer... Maybe I'm trying to give myself a little bit of a pat on the shoulder, but he's a developer with a little bit of guts to go into Naco and try to raise money to put thirty-seven point five million dollars into it. There are a lot of people lining up. Unfortunately, I believe Naco has great potential. And I thought others would argue, well, it could be realized a different way, but this is the project in front of you. We've heard about the economic inputs. The camp ripple also generated a fourteen-point-four million in annual taxable sales, along with fourteen-point-nine million in annual off-site visitor spending in Bisbee. The project could directly support an estimated sixty-five jobs on site and indirectly support one-hundred-and-thirty-eight additional jobs elsewhere in the county at build-out. The project could also generate one-time construction impacts. Construction costs for all four phases are estimated at twenty-seven-point-five million. This construction activity could generate a one-time economic impact of thirty-eight million, supporting an estimated three-hundred-and-ten jobs and fourteen-point-eight million in labor income over a multi-year construction period. You often hear about the music venue, which is a critical part of this project to draw the people, we believe. There's more to it than quote-unquote rock and roll. For example, there's a group called the Bi-National Arts Institute that works with children on both sides of the border. Got to remember that Naco is not just Naco, Arizona. Naco is Naco, Mexico, and many people have family on both sides of the border. And I talked to the executive director of this organization, and she feels that there's a great opportunity to be able to do concerts with these young people that have deep places to perform. So it's more than just the Taylor Swifts of the world, which I don't think, it is going to come down to Naco anytime soon, although I'd love to, love to have her. But there's also, and then could be a movie in the park, which Naco residents don't have the opportunity to enjoy right now. It could be a cello player sitting up there alone. Music can mean many different things. It could be the mariachi festival. There's just all kinds of entertainment available, so I just hope you don't pigeonhole what it is, what it becomes. The, we believe in the amenities. You can't have the amenities, though, without the infrastructures to support the amenities, the economics. So you can't have walking paths and beautiful landscaping and playground for the kids and urban fishing and maybe community gardens, if that's what the community wants, and other things, if you don't have the economics to support it, so you need a development there. Talked about the increase to movie property values. We've, I'm done, but also we've increased the neighborhood buffer as a response, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Public hearing is now closed. This is the time for commission discussion. I entertain questions from the commissioners.
And I'm sure.
Mr. Lindbergh.
So I'm calculating quickly with the presentation. There's a lot going on. There are a lot of RV slots, campsites, amphitheater, weddings, performing artists, fishing. To me, that means a lot of people. That means a lot of vehicles. A one RV can have one or two cars associated with the RV. So that brings me to the traffic impact report, which I reviewed, and it reveals virtually no impact on traffic or the need for additional traffic signals or turn lanes, or the need to widen roads with a fully functioning project. The report also revealed no crash trends in the area, but did not consider the likelihood of increased collisions with increased traffic. Lastly, the report suggests staff and police presence only during the first few special events. I would suggest that it would be important to have at least traffic staff for every large event. So I guess I would like to know from Mr. Lewis how this current proposal will not negatively impact local traffic and first responder access.
That, Mr. Lewis?
It's a good question. First, I would say that I think the major concern would be, from what I understand, when people are leaving a given event, a larger event. I feel that most of the events are not going to be large. They're going to be very small, like you would have at one of the bars in Bisbee. And our analysis shows that probably seventy percent of the people that are going to go to the events, large or small, maybe even more that's small, would be ones that were already staying at the park. In other words, they would not be leaving after, if it was just an amphitheater and there was no camping, then everybody would be leaving, right? Because there's no place to stay. But we believe that seventy percent, at least seventy percent of the venue participants will be staying on site. And that there will also be a shuttle to and from, which will save the number of cars to and from Bisbee. To answer your question about traffic control on larger events, yes, definitely. We would, both for security, hire off-duty sheriffs, and we can make that as a condition, too, and have traffic direction, which would direct everybody out to Naco Highway, to the thirty percent of the people that were leaving. So, you know, maybe that's, if you have five hundred people on a big event and three hundred to three fifty are staying there, and maybe they all, two people to a car, you know, maybe, and then some people are taking the shuttle back and forth, you know, maybe that's at the end of the evening, seventy-five cars. I'm speaking vaguely here, but I'm trying to give you the idea that people are, would be staying. Most of the guests would be staying on site, I believe. That answers your question?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. And then my second question is, or a concern, is as was pointed out, most of the community are working folks, two parents working with children. And you've got events going on until ten PM on weekdays. So you've got possibly noise from weddings or amphitheater. You've got associated noise with the RVs, I would think. And, you know, so noise and light pollution, I'm kind of concerned with.
Sure. Although the, the, the conditions would allow for music, I perceive it's on a weekday night, that, see amplified music, let's say we wanted to do a movie in the park. That would be considered amplified sound. Would not, that's what I was talking about earlier, different uses and all that. So, you know, maybe you do have a music, you have a movie, and another night you just have the music on low, where people are just sitting out in the grass, but there's not even a performer on the stage. There won't be performers every night. It's just, it's not that big of a venue. But the, we had to put some conditions in there. And that's what the staff, and we agreed with staff that we made sense. Staff came back to us and actually limited the hours that we originally proposed. But if they need to be limited more, we're open to that. But I just don't want you to get the impression that there is, we're going to have a rock and roll band out there blasting their music every night, because we're a neighbor, too. We're sensitive of the neighborhood, and we've got to... We know that if we're not keeping that neighborhood happy, and they're complaining to the county all the time, that we're in trouble. So we've got every incentive to be a good neighbor.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Mr. Montgomery?
I do have a few questions. Thank you. I'm sorry, Miss List. You've run a few laps.
I'm trying to get off the machine, but...
I need to do some laps myself. I do have some questions. Not sure where to start on this. One of these is a proposed four-hundred-and-eighty dry campsites. So for the benefit of everybody, could you describe a dry campsite?
Sure. It's a good question. A dry campsite is defined as one that does not have hookups. So there is no potable water, there is no sewage hookup, and there's no electrical hookup.
So while it is in that condition, it could also just be a parking lot, right?
Well, it's, it's built out. I mean, if you've been, for example, it's, the roadway's built out. I don't know about parking lot. You see, you think of RVs parked next to each other. This is really, two units per acre is what it comes down to. It's a very low density, which you have to find parking areas, but it's not like an RV park, or the RV spaces where you have one next to each other.
I'm speculating. Steph, could we have the picture back up again, the cover page with the color photo? Of the RV park across the street? There you go.
That's an RV park?
Yes. And you're proposing four-hundred-and-eighty parking spots, but without hookups, right?
Yes. So if you look, you can kind of, I don't know if they can zoom in at all and all that, but you can see, you can see how they're not right next to each other. They're spaced quite a bit apart compared to the one-hundred-and-forty-four.
Yes.
And the one-hundred-and-forty-four are right next to each other, and those are the ones with hookups.
Okay. I do understand that. My, I guess my question is, with four-hundred-and-eighty blank spaces, all their traffic could park there. If there was an event going on and needed parking, there it would be. Is that right?
No, they, they would not have access to the RV spaces unless they were paying for one of those campground spots.
Okay. Then one of our speakers mentioned the population of Naco. Does anybody know that? Is it eleven hundred? Between eight and eleven? With...
Go with a thousand, Robert.
Me?
Go with a thousand.
Okay. Now with approximately, someone said forty-eight percent being children, half of the population being kids. Can we go with that? Okay. Then with, again, back to four-hundred-and-eighty campsites, I suspect more than one person would populate each campsite. It would take a while, I guess, say, two. Now you've got a thousand campers out there outnumbering the people in the town, plus the other hookup campsites with some more folks there. And I don't know that anybody, that all of them would think they're restricted to walk around only their campsite. They could go uptown to Naco, the beautiful downtown Naco, and they could wander around there at will, because this is the United States. I suppose that many of them would do that. I might think that neighbors might not be enthused by that idea, as has been mentioned here. I wonder what police and fire have to say about that with doubling the population of the town in one weekend.
Do you want me to respond?
Please, please, yes.
Sure. I guess you could speculate that people would leave. I see people leave. They're more interested in probably going to Camp Naco than anything, because... And that's what I think we want people to be doing. I don't, I, this is coming from my perspective, obviously. Everybody can have their own perspective, but I don't see them wanting, why would they want to wander around Naco? They've got, they've got a restaurant and bar, and they've got, they've got the entertainment on site. They can take a shuttle into Bisbee. Maybe if some new businesses popped up in old Naco, we would encourage them to go into, I encourage them, if they want to check out someplace new, to go to Gay Nineties. I mean, I, we're all about growing different businesses, or maybe some new artists pop up in old Bisbee, and, excuse me, in Naco, and we can encourage them to go visit their galleries. There's a lot of, there's a lot of positives, I guess, can help that. Also, we, on all our numbers, campsites, this is true in the industry in general, usually run about fifty percent occupancy. So take all your numbers, your maximum numbers, and divide it by two, and that'd be the typical. And those, during the weekdays, would be less than during the weekends, but...
Okay. I'm just imagining sudden traffic through the neighborhood, as we're, many of us are experiencing these days, the visitors from other countries. But they're nonetheless, and perhaps a percentage would stay in the campgrounds and just hang out. I imagine others would go to town, walk around, visit, and look at where they are. That would have a barrier. What else do I want to ask? It's... To me, I mean, we did address a very similar proposal a couple months ago. This has been repackaged in a nicer form, and I appreciate the effort. You've gone to a great deal of it. But it's still pretty much the same plan with different elements. Maybe some of those elements are good for the area, but I believe that's up to the local people to determine. And when it comes to pigeonholing or identifying a phrase, that you have done that to yourself with your logo and calling it Camp Riff. The young lady in the blue top mentioned it earlier. Steph, could I ask you for the definition of riff? I had it in my phone, but it has disappeared.
I could tell you. And she, right, a riff is like a guitar riff. And it, I'm not hiding the fact. We could, I could have called it camp classical music, but I'm trying to bring a fun element, and yes, we are trying to draw music lovers there, so I'm not going to shy away from that. If it's pigeonholed, it's pigeonholed.
Okay. So I do understand that, and I appreciate you. You have every right to attempt to think like that, everybody. But I think that it is up to the people who live there and have to listen to that. Would you mind reading the definition?
Sure. A short repeated phrase in a popular music, and jazz typically uses an introduction or refrain in a song.
And that is, I believe, in the last effort presentation a couple months ago, when the primary reason, along with traffic, dust, dirt, noise, and music, that that effort was denied. I can't remember. Were you able to take that to the board of supervisors on the pew? No?
We did not.
Okay. I don't see this as being much different. It just has more surrounding... elements to it, but it comes down to riff, camp riff. Having events and music, every kind of music and noise on a regular basis. But I think a majority of the population there does not. Now, I think that is my last question, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, anybody else or?
Chris Pickett. Actually, do you have a question?
Sure.
Living in a very small community, uh, we have difficulty with the farm water supply. I heard, I heard about the, we do not even have a sanitation system in our area. But I know that, and I heard very little about the water situation in the Naco area, other than I think I heard some people say that at times they're asked not to water their, wash their cars, probably water their wands, et cetera. And you're talking about bringing in a lot of people, even though it's on a short basis. It puts a real strain on the water supply for a small community and the abilities to maintain that, uh, and I heard very little about that.
Sure, but um, well, you may or may not know, first of all. First Stone Water Covers, they pu- purchased the water company for Naco. Um, but also, I don't, probably aware that Arizona Water, which serves all of Bisbee um, is well is in Naco. Uh, in fact, it's a couple hundred yards from our property, so that's serving fifty-five hundred people, there's. And the reason for that is, there's uh fortunately a very good uh aquifer below. Which um is not in the cab district and not in any of the water management districts, but so. In other words, a lot of people in the surrounding community get their water from, from um from Arizona Water and both in Hur- Hurstone, um. People complain that the trees are dying, the non-indigenous pine trees, which were watered with fifty thousand gallons of well water a year on the golf course. Which people are very, again, people are very, on one hand, people don't want me to, you know, use, they don't want more water use, on the other hand. This was an eighteen-hole golf course, fifty thousand gallons is a lot of water, it could serve thousands and thousands and thousands of people. Um. A- anyway, the, a lot of these spaces are dry spaces, so people are bringing in their own potable water too. Um, the actual water that we'd be using, maybe with a clubhouse and all that, is equivalent to maybe four single-family homes. Um, because all you really have is the water for the bar, restaurant and bar, which really doesn't use that a, a great deal on the whole realm of things. Um, and the whole, the point of in G, uh, using the Cochise County uh plant criteria is that they're very low water usage plants, and that's why they have mandatory lists that you need to stick to, so. Uh, we're going from a very high-use water situation to a, what I say would be a relatively very low. Even if this was developed to single-family homes, it would be, it would be a much greater water use.
If there wouldn't be quite as many homes there, because there is.
True.
You, you're going to have approximately the same number of people living part-time weekends, what, that would live in a home in those campsites, and even if it's half of them. You're still looking at that kind of water use.
We could do, we could put together, I, before when I did an analysis on the golf course, I hired an expert to do the water usage on an analysis. We could do it, an analysis on what a different type, what a different development would require. All I can, all I can really offer you is what the golf course was at very high water usage development. In my opinion, without being an expert in it, this would be lower than if it was much lower than if it was developed to single-family homes, but that, that's for the experts to determine. I'm not arguing, I'm just saying that.
Arizona's gone through a drought situation in that, in that time. And I'm not familiar with the the aquifers in this area or the water flow, I know where we are, we're looking at a lot of people having to lower their wells.
The, the issue, one of the issues that we have is Phelps, not Phelps Dodge, Freeport-Ben Maine has test wells, and their, the worry is always that that um, that that sulfur will get into, contaminants will get into it. But Rosemead owns all the properties behind us, and they're water banking too, so um, they're the ones that also own Arizona Water. I don't have.
It's concerned, I have.
I understand.
Anything else? Mr. Marzky?
He didn't have a couple comments, uh. Benson's gone to somewhat like this, a concert a year ago. A lot of people were not for it, many were way against it. This year, it just turned around, the number of supporters probably tripled or quadrupled, and even the businesses in the town were the same way, a lot more were supporters and contributors to that concept. So these things, kind of scary at first, and I said the same thing, a lot of comments are here. Of Benson, but it filled up all the uh RV parks in the Benson area, and they had to leave, to go to St. David, to Will Topps. To other places like that, to park, and then come back, but the activities there increased enough for people to look at it and say, well, Will Topps is only thirty-five miles, so we can go back and forth each day for that, so. Now I'm looking at it, I, in comparison with what we had before and with what you put today, um, I support. I think it's a, a thing that's going to be phased in, and I think people are going to to look at it in a different way as it moves in. And I hear there's going to have to be some support and some work between the, the uh development and the community, those types of things will work out.
Thank you, Mr. Marzky, Mr. Saunders, do you have any questions?
I do, um, first of all, I agree that dry camping's a lot less water usage than a golf course. That's going to be a whole lot less water source needed, um, I had a question on your phasing. Out of your book on uh supporting narrative in your phasing. Your phasing here shows a total of five hundred and twenty-one campsites, and we're talking about six hundred and twenty-four. I don't know if that's just an error, this, just uh, I know this is a concept, but is there more than here?
Not correct, but it's five hundred and twenty.
So it's more like five hundred and twenty-one total rather than a six twenty-four. And then uh, your phasing plan in, in here, it's, you got five phase, four phases. With a one year between phases, not to exceed five years, so that's a little confusing, but is it your intent to build out in five years, is that?
That's correct, and I can go over the, the phase build-out if you want me to, or.
No, no, it's fine, I was curious, and then um, is the road going to be hard-surfaced?
Yes.
And then kind of looks like maybe in the concept, there are concrete pads or something that each.
It, it might be uh decomposed granite or concrete, decomposed granite is a little nicer surface sometimes for an art, you know.
Something of a hard side.
Yeah.
And, and I have to agree, um, the Benson uh, uh, music festival over there was uh well-received and and there are no uh issues with the police department, fire, any, any, any of that part of it, so it was, it was very well put together.
You got the support of the Naco Volunteer Fire Department, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders, Mr. Young, we haven't heard from you.
Uh, most of my questions have been answered, but I do have a couple. Okay, so these events for weddings, kids' events, or whatever's going to happen. The capacity was a hundred and fifty, did I hear that correctly?
The, the capacity of the ballroom, I think, is two hundred if I, if I'm correct.
To be a maximum. And there's no thought of expanding that, so it'll be maximum two hundred?
I, I believe so. I think that's the fire occupancy, I, I could be off a couple, but I believe that that's the number.
Okay. And, and I understand that the amphitheater, uh, i- it's going to be for five hundred people, is that correct?
Up to, I rarely, it's, well, you can't foresee everything, but I don't foresee that, that being that busy that.
Well, I, I think I heard earlier that that was the uh max capacity of the amphitheater.
Correct.
And, and that is uh, I'm assuming, I didn't see it anywhere in the maps. That it is close to your main facilities?
Uh, yes, it's, if you look at the rendering, it's right there beyond the clubhouse.
Okay, let me switch screens here. Okay.
You see where the people are sitting?
Yes.
Right there, yeah, with the.
Okay, let's see that. Good, because I understand that, that, that was, as well as this time and last time, that was a major concern of the neighbors. So, max capacity of five hundred.
Right.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. That leaves me. Mr. Montgomery, you go first.
I only wanted to point out the uh the vast difference between Benson and Naco. And Benson, of course, being exactly on I-ten, has infinite traffic every day and night forever. Um, they're going to have, I mean, it's a city, they have a lot more stuff there. Naco is the exact opposite, dropping down from I-ten for an hour or so. Um, so, it's a different world, that's just, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one, it's al- almost a a subjective question, who are you going to market to, where are these people going to come from with their RVs and their tents and?
Uh, throughout Arizona, it's from, uh, we we already know that music lovers come to Bisbee, weekend and week out, um, and really enjoy it, it's, it's Bisbee is known as um kind of the music capital of Arizona, right, the live music capital of Arizona. Um. Yes, what we see, we see tourists that have never really come to Bisbee and Naco before, I, I grew up in Phoenix and spent a lot of my time in the metropolitan area, and I I talked to a hundred people, and maybe nine of them, ten of them have been to Bisbee once in their life. And, you know, eighty of them have been to Jerome, I I believe there's a lot of opportunity to get more tourists down to Cochise County in general, and, or I wouldn't suggesting of putting uh a, a great deal of money into a project such as this, uh, so. To answer your question, they'll come throughout Arizona, I know they'll, they'll come because I already, I own a bar in Bisbee, I, I talk to people day in and day out, and um, I feel like I have a feel for what tourists are looking for, and and while they come and wait till they see the view of Naco, it's, it's a hidden secret of the Mule, of the Mule Mountains.
So there's no doubt that we need economic boosts around here, no doubt, I like what you're saying. I'm tempted to support you doing what you want to do on your property, there's, there's that issue in Arizona always. And especially Cochise County. Um, I, I have a lot of reservations, Noel Street is just a two-lane road. Your traffic people have not recommended any right-hand turn lanes, any left-hand turn lanes, they've not recommended a traffic signal. They barely increase traffic by one car. When you've got five hundred camping sites, be they RVs or tents, I, I just don't, there's no sense there to me. So that, that worries me, and an approval vote for me would come with a lot of worries about traffic. On the other hand, you make it sound like something small and friendly, like what happens in Bisbee. So I guess what I'm saying is, I, I'm conflicted, and I don't understand how you're going to make this monster, monstrous investment work. But I'd like to see it work.
So would I.
Yeah, but there's just, there's just so much I don't understand about your approach, but we'll have to leave it at that. And is there anything else before we go vote, Mr. Marzky?
I think our duty is, is this a logical thing for that? Not whether it's going to work or not, that's up to the person who's going to build it. I mean, we, we should be looking at, is this logical, is it, is it the right place for something like this? I think we, most of us agree, yes, it is, with a lot, lot of reservations, but is it going to work? We don't know, but it's up to them to make it work, or it's their money they're investing. And this is like I say, if there's a convenience store on one corner and then somebody puts another one in to block down, is it logical? Probably yes, is it necessarily going to work? Yes and no. They either run the other one out of business, or they both share the business. And it's up to that person to make it work, it's not something that we are responsible for. We're responsible, is it logical for that to happen?
Thank you, Mr. Marzky, for that, Mr. Montgomery.
And with that in mind, I totally agree, we've mentioned that before. Uh, but one of our other uh prerequisites is the neighborhood itself, those who are directly affected, we have to consider that. And in this case, I believe the people who live in the town, in the city of Naco, uh, really get first crack at it. Whereas most of the support, uh, we've been told, is from Bisbee, elsewhere tourists. Who don't live there, but would like to have a place to go and tour, that's understandable, what about the folks who live there? And have to endure this all the time, I think, in my opinion, uh, which their opinion has to be considered here. And I am considering.
I, I have to agree with that, in the fact that I have lived in the community that I live in now, very small, or very, or we're on I-ten, we're remote. Um, we travel forty-five miles to a great, um, um, store, the bank. Go to the, well, we actually have a clinic uh in our town now, but if we would be highly impacted as a community if we had this much of a change come into our area, as close as if you could in Naco had it. It would be monumental to the people who have worked there for many years and, and reside there, and I guess uh, they're very close to what is happening, and I I have mixed feelings in the fact that I have worked economic development. And I understand the need to bring economic development into a community as small as this, and they're very close to Bisbee, not that far away from Sierra Vista, and um, yet is this the right type of economic development to be used in this area? And I have no answer to that, and have no answer to what um would be the right stuff, things, but I also have to. But I also have to agree that I've always kind of had the feeling of being a native Arizonian, that you should have a right to do what you want to on your own property also. But I would highly, highly recommend that you really take in the empathy and consideration of those people that are going to be so highly impacted by this development. It's, it's, it's monumental, and you wouldn't understand unless you've lived in one of these small towns for many years. And that's why we're involved.
I have one more question.
Thank you, Ms. Fickett. Mr. Saunders?
This staff, I, I, I mean, did I misunderstand you? How many, how many for, you received letters for and against, you know what those totals were?
Yes, sir.
I misunderstood you.
Sure. It was 15 and 12 official of property owners within the notification area. We did receive significantly more input, positive input, from folks who live outside the notification area. We did include the petition that was submitted to us by the applicant from their neighborhood meeting in February. There were four property owners on that as well, who attended the neighborhood meeting and participated in the process.
And what, the 15 were for or against?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Saunders, yes, it was 15 in favor and 12 in opposition.
Thank you. So just pointed out, most of the 15 in favor were not local people.
Not least.
Yeah, they're from other areas. Did you say that was just in the area?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Saunders, that's correct. We had a 1,000-foot notification area with over 230 notices sent out. 15 responded in favor within that notification area, and 12 responded in opposition.
Just to finish on that conversation, the, the petition that was signed at the neighborhood meeting had 30 people. 16 gave Naco as a residence, so I don't know how that fits into this.
That's correct, Madam Chair. So there were 30 folks that signed. 17 were identified their addresses in Naco. Some of those were residents, they were not property owners and were not counted. There were some property owners that owned, owned multiple parcels. A lot of those parcels to the immediate west with the X's, there is one property owner there who owns four parcels, so it was counted four times. There's a property owner to the south, south of the RV park, that owns five parcels, and those are the green checkmarks you see in the center, because they own five parcels. So we accounted for all of the parcels owned by the signators on the petition.
It narrows that field. All right, is there anything else? Before we go to a vote, I would like to thank Mr. Marzky for his wisdom. Mr. Montgomery, how will you vote?
We'll vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we've gotten way ahead of ourselves here. I was down on the wrong discussion column, I do apologize. Let's have a report, Mr. Taylor, and regroup our thinking.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on, this is the staff recommendation for the Master Development Plan 2401. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends 40 docket MDP 2401 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Changing the land use designation of 175 acres from recreational open space and business as identified in the Naco Area Plan to Camp Rift MDP. Staff recommendation for docket RZ 2405, based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends 40 docket RZ 2405 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of conditional approval, rezoning APNs 10255002 and 10255005 from R36 and R4 to PD Plan Development District with the following conditions. Outdoor music shall end by 8:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, midnight Friday and Saturday, 10:00 p.m. for amplified music on Fridays and Saturdays, and 6:00 p.m. on Sunday. Existing gated access to Kettle Avenue shall not be accessible to the public. Incorporate the following design standards identified in the Naco Area Plan. Dedicate drainage ways to preserve native vegetation and wildlife habitat, serving as natural breaks, brakes in development. 10-foot landscape buffers along the budding streets using native vegetation and/or new drought-tolerant vegetation. Vegetate parking lots with canopy trees, stabilize green brush drawbanks with existing or new drought-tolerant vegetation. Ensure development harmonizes with surrounding neighborhood through the use of setbacks, landscaping, screening, as well as natural terrain. And Madam Chair, I would like to note that the increases in setbacks, as well as the buffers, were agreed to by the applicant, as stated during, earlier in their presentation. We shared with the applicant earlier that we would, we would request that the applicant perhaps reach out to those property owners to the west to see if there's any additional mitigation that they could do prior to these dockets appearing before the Board of Supervisors. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. We have two motions. We have the, the MDP and the zoning. They are both conditional on each other, so I do believe we can vote on both of those at the same time. My call for a motion, please?
Do you want one or two?
Two.
Two. Madam Chair? I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors full of docket MDP 2401, changing the land use designation of 175 acres of recreational open space and business, as identified in the Naco Area Plan to Camp Rift MDP. Factors in favor constitute to find some fact.
Number two?
Number two. Madam Chair? I move to recommend a word of approval to the Board of Supervisors of docket RZ 2405 with conditions recommended by staff, resuming APN 10255002 and 10255005 from R36, sorry, R4 by designation, the factors in favor of all constitute to find some fact.
And I would call for a second, and would you indicate that you're seconding both motions?
Okay, can I interject? After a second is another time for questions and discussion. I have that, if there's a second.
And I will second both of them.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders.
Okay.
Any final discussion?
Clarification, staff, could you identify the difference between the two motions?
Yes, sir. Madam Chair and Commissioner Montgomery, an approval of an MDP constitutes a comprehensive plan amendment. Comprehensive plan amendments typically will go before the commission and then ultimately the Board of Supervisors, and they are adopted via resolution. A zoning amendment is adopted via ordinance. We've previously incorporated both motions into a single motion for a comprehensive plan case previously, but in the interest of specificity, we wanted to go ahead and create two separate motions here, as they are adopted via resolution and ordinance, independently of each other.
So I do remember that, and I do see this, but I'm suggesting they are different, and should be seconded and voted on once at a time.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Montgomery, I would, I would defer to legal as to whether or not these should be voted on separately or together.
So we asked that we split these things out there?
Maybe I'm meeting, oh, there we go. This came up at the last meeting, so we asked that these sorts of things be split out, but I think you're absolutely correct, these are kind of intertwined together, and there's nothing inappropriate about voting.
There's no reason we can't take two separate votes.
It's more efficient, yeah.
I mean, we could vote twice.
You could vote them, for each of them, you know, one at a time in order, or you could do it together, you know, just take it by its horns. Yeah. But the chair's correct.
I, is there any further discussion?
Since it is either or on advice of counsel, you can pick.
I, I can. And if there's no more discussion, I think we will vote on MDP 24-01 first. Mr. Montgomery, go ahead.
There's a certain language at the end of it, I have to vote no.
Mr. Lindbach?
No, based on my previous concerns.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Marzky?
Yeah.
Mr. Saunders?
Yeah.
Ms. Fickett?
I have to vote no.
Oh, would do that to me, wouldn't you?
Sorry.
Against some of my reservations, I'm going to vote yes, because we have to move forward with economic development. This landowner cannot be held hostage indefinitely. So, the MDP 24-01 passes. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors meeting dealing with this docket. Now we will vote on the rezoning. RZ 24-05 has been motioned and seconded. I call for the question, Mr. Montgomery.
Again, to protect the interests of the residents. Their desires. No.
Mr. Lindbach?
I agree with Commissioner Montgomery, and no.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Marzky?
Yeah.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
And Ms. Fickett?
No.
And Chair again votes yes. This motion also passes with the same instruction, not, you may appeal it, you could see staff for the appeal to the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And I thank you for your patience and indulgence. Ms. Blackland, do we have a report? Folks, we have a meeting to finish, if you wouldn't mind. Excuse me. Hi, excuse me, can we remove you to the lobby so we may finish our meeting? Thank you so much. Ms. Blackland, what do we have?
Okay, well, we do have a meeting next month, it's going to be on May 8th. We have a downzoning. We have two special uses, and we have a concurrent rezoning and comp plan amendment.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything for the good of the commission? We are adjourned.